Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the February 10th, 2020 Village Board of Trustees Meeting. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Mayor Luisey.
Present. And trustee Gina Lee is enjoying the sunshine down in Florida with the Tuckahoe Tigers cheerleading squad, who have won, from what I've just heard, two competitions. And I will leave all the particulars of exactly what they won until trustee Lee gets back next, and she'll report at the next meeting. We have no appointments this evening, however, we do have two presentations. And the first one will be a presentation on the 2020 census from the Westchester County Commissioner of Planning, Norma Drummond.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening.
Hello.
You wouldn't know from Drummond that I'm Italian, but I'm going to take the microphone so that we can use this, and it helps me so I don't swim so much when I talk. All right? So, 2020 census is coming up. We are actually 51 days away.
I'm sorry, no, you're good.
Oh, okay. And so, we are trying to get everyone's attention to the fact that the census is coming up, and how important it is, and what's new this time around, okay? So, we're starting with the fact that the census itself is mandated by the United States Constitution. The first census was done in 1790, so this is the 24th decennial census, decennial meaning it's done every 10 years. It is, most people think of it as being responsible for how the 435 seats of the House of Representatives are distributed, that's one of its uses, but it also has a say in how our 17 county legislative districts are divided up, and how our local assemblies, senate districts, and many, many other districts around the county are also divided up. More importantly, particularly for local municipalities, the census data is used for the distribution of about $880 billion a year of federal programs across all of the country. In fact, the Census Bureau tells us, for every person that is not counted, it's a loss to the local municipalities, including the county, of approximately $2,500 a year. So, just 400 people not getting counted is the loss to the local municipalities of $1 million a year. Now, in 2010, we weren't worried about getting people counted for the census. It was the normal, everyday business. It wasn't until after the results came out that we were, wow, something's wrong with some of these numbers, particularly in some of our smaller villages. And that's what made us say, we couldn't let that opportunity pass us by. The village of Portchester, the village of Boston, they've been living likely with undercounted numbers by the thousands for the last 10 years. And think about your sales tax distribution is based on the 2010 census numbers, all right? So, the 2020 numbers you will be living with for the next 10 years, it's going to be very important for you to make sure that you get an accurate count. So, what's new with Census 2020, this will be the first census where people will have the opportunity to respond online. In fact, most people in this country are not going to get a paper survey. They're not going to get paper. You will have the opportunity to respond on your smartphone, on a laptop, on your internet at home, if you have internet at home, and again, that's one of our concerns. But also, you'll have the opportunity to call the Census Bureau and actually respond to the census by calling them and just providing your information to them. The advantage of doing it online is the data is going to be available to us much quicker. In fact, starting March 20th, we're going to have the opportunity to see the response rates in each of the census tracts in Westchester. So, we'll be able to see ahead of time if there's an issue in particular areas of the county where we're not getting a good count. This is also a census where the census employees will have the opportunity to talk to building managers and to neighbors to ask how many people live in that housing unit, if they can't get any response to knocking on the door, all right? And the Census Bureau will have the opportunity to get data from local other governments, federal governments, post office being one of them, HUD, the VA services, about how many people live in housing units, whatever data they may have. But I want to be very clear, the Census Bureau cannot share their data with any other government agency, all right? So, the data is confidential. Census 2020 is the only 100% count of the population. Notice I did not say citizens. It is a 100% count of the population. We are trying to count everybody who is residing or living in the United States. It is not a count of just citizenship. It never has been, all right? It's also a count, by the way, of housing units and their vacancy rate. We are trying to get an understanding, the Census Bureau is trying to get an understanding of how many units are vacant. So, there are only nine questions that you're going to be asked to respond to under Census 2020. What's your name? How old are you? Where do you live? Do you rent or own your unit? What's your age, your sex, your ethnicity? And then, for people beyond the first person, you will be asked, what is your relationship to the first person who responded to the census? And so, even not related is going to be one of the answers, but spouse, child, aunt, uncle, grandmother, whatever it might be, there's going to be many, many different options, because they understand that families come in all different shapes and sizes these days, and households. However, while Census 2020 is also being conducted, we need to let people know that the American Community Survey is also continuing to be conducted. And so, ACS, or the American Community Survey, is where they survey about 300,000 households every month, and then they aggregate that data up and average it out and release it in five-year increments. So, it's not nearly as accurate as the census data itself, but they will be conducting that survey. So, 300,000 households across this country will also be getting the census, the ACS surveys at the same time that they are going to be getting the Census 2020 surveys. Many people get confused. I'd like to help you understand all of this by telling, explaining to you, I have four children, and I can't count any of my four children. My son and his wife live upstate New York, they'll find, they're living in a private housing unit, they'll complete the census for themselves. But my three daughters are all students, okay? I have twin daughters who are 26, both of them in graduate school, one of them is up in Boston. And she called me the other day, or last week, and she said, Mom, I got the census. And I said, no, you didn't. And she said, yeah, I did, I really got the census. And I said, no, you didn't. Apparently, a pile of mail in her house finally fell off the table, because young people don't look at mail, I've learned. And so, she, in going through, picking up the mail, she saw an envelope from the census. She got an American Community Survey, survey, okay? So, she got the ACS survey, which is like 60 questions, it's not just nine. But, as a grad student, she lives in a three-bedroom apartment with two other grad school students. They are not related to each other, and so, one of the worries that I had had for her earlier this, late last year, when we had a discussion about it, was making sure that one of them actually got that survey and filled it out, because again, young people don't look at their mail. I do have to tell you, her twin sister, again, 26, she's out at the University of Utah, was home around Thanksgiving time, and asked, was I going to be home the next night? And I said, no, I have to go do a census presentation in Portchester. And my 26-year-old daughter said, what's a census? Think about it, 10 years ago, she was 16. She didn't have to worry about completing a census, all right? There's a big, not only are we worried about senior citizens and the fact that they have to fill out this census electronically, but we're worried about young people, okay? Young adults who may not have been taught in school that they have a responsibility to complete the census. We're worried about children under five. The Census Bureau tells us that children under five are one of the most undercounted groups. We think it's because mom and dad think, well, they're not in school yet, they don't matter. They do matter, because we all know you can't build onto a school overnight. You don't close down a school overnight. You look at the projections for the next couple of years. And so, based on birth data, we know that children under five were in fact undercounted. We're also worried about the undocumented, and people who don't necessarily speak English well, or limited English proficient. The Census Bureau has thought of that angle, and because they have, not only are materials and applications available in 12 languages, but they actually have technical support available in 59 languages. So, they have certainly thought of that. But again, we have, there are all sorts of things that we don't necessarily think about in the everyday world that we live in, as we try to prepare people and everyone for the census coming. So, I do like to start with a little bit of census geography to help people understand confidentiality and the nature of their data. So, we start in the middle of the screen with a census block. If I were to live, leave City Hall here, go down to Columbus Avenue, make the right, go around to the next block, make a right, eventually, I would arrive back at City Hall's front door here. That is a city block, that's a block. That is the lowest level of census geography, and the Census Bureau rarely releases data down at that level, certainly no names, no nothing. And so, but the person, using my example in the middle of the screen, the person who lives across from me on Glen Ridge Road actually lives in another block. In fact, using my example down to the block group on the bottom, that person ends up in another block group. So, it's impossible for any one household to be able, their data to be determined where it is, because a block group can have anywhere between 600 and 3,000 people, with an optimum size of about 1,200. But the next level of geography, many block groups make up our census tracts, that's the census geography most people are familiar with. And so, census tracts will have anywhere between 1,200 and 8,000 people, all right? With an optimum size of about 4,000. We have approximately 200 census tracts in Westchester County, okay? But again, the census geography itself helps to understand the confidential nature of data. So, local update of census addresses is my number-one reason why I am getting out to all the municipalities and helping you understand why we're concerned about data. During the summer of 2018, the Planning Department, we are a census affiliate, so we do work behind the scenes with the Census Bureau, helping them prepare for the next census, and then all throughout the 10 years, we work using that census data and help them to help other agencies understand how to use it. At the end of the summer of 2018, my staff had found a total of 370,000 housing units in Westchester County. Officially, in the housing needs assessment that the county executive just relieved just a couple months ago, officially, there are 345,885 housing units. We found the addresses for 24,000 housing units more than officially exist. Now, that made us like, say, wow, something's wrong. And so, we did in fact do a review and find that there were seven municipalities in Westchester, Tuckahoe not being one of them, who were not reporting their monthly building permit surveys, all right? And many of them had not been doing it for many, many years. So, two of our large cities, two of our large villages, two of our large towns were not reporting. And so, Westchester's housing stock has been undercounted for many, many years. And so, that did not help us get ready for this census. So, we have now found those housing units, we don't care whether they're legal or not. I'm going to go back to my, that story about my daughter from Utah, when she was home. So, I had explained to her about the census, what it is, and you're going to get a letter in the mail, and she says, what if I don't get mail? And I was like, what? You know? And then, I said, well, you know, if you have a TV, they're going to have a see-through satellite. She goes, Mom, we don't watch TV. I should, again, I should know, I'm so out of touch sometimes. I come to find out that my 26-year-old daughter in Utah, not in Westchester, in Utah, is living in an illegal housing apartment. She lives in a basement of somebody's house, but apparently, it has a great yard for her dog, okay? What's on the minds of young people is not necessarily what we all think about, okay? So, a friend of hers who created this opportunity for her to live in her basement, she doesn't get her own mail, her landlord gets her mail and passes it on to her. That's, the important point of raising that story is that, at the Census Bureau, they do not care if the housing is legal or not. They are just trying to get a count of people, all right? So, because my employees are also sworn under Title 13 of the U.S. Code, I am not allowed to share with the local municipality the addresses of all of those apartments that we found in each of the municipalities, okay? Same as where, as I keep trying to tell people, the data is confidential, we are under that same level of confidentiality, I can't even share it with the municipalities, who are our partners in this, all right? So, again, it's just helping you understand, but this is the number-one reason, there's So, another thing that we do behind the scenes is the boundary and annexation survey data. On the example, and I apologize, it's not the greatest thing to be able to see, but on the left is the city of New Rochelle, in the middle is the town of Mamernick, and on the right is the village of Larchmont. The blue line is the boundary line for each of these municipalities that the Census Bureau had on record. The white line is the real boundary line. So, again, this is one of those things that we do behind the scenes, because we certainly want to make sure Larchmont's already small enough as it is, we want to make sure that Larchmont gets credit for every housing unit that truly belongs in that little village, and then, you know, Mamernick and New Rochelle as well. So, where we are on the timeline, 2020 census began working, the Census Bureau began working on this in 2011. It takes a lot of years to be able to get this technology up and going. We certainly learned from the Obamacare sign-on that you can't let everybody sign on at the same time. So, there's going to be a couple tranches of mail that will go out, and we'll get to that in one second. But the census itself, the Census Bureau has actually started counting people. The Census Director was up in Alaska in January and counted the first people up in that little village up in Alaska. I'm thankful I'm not that Census Bureau employee that had to go to Alaska in January. But anyway, they have started counting people. In Westchester, they will start to count people this month, in February. And I've told you about three of my kids, my fourth daughter is a college student in Washington, DC. She lives in a dorm, she lives in a group quarters. The Census Bureau is going to start counting group quarters this month. We have dorms here in Westchester, all right? And so, students who live in college dorms, where they lay their head on April 1st, will be counted in the dorms that they live in. They are not counted in our residences at home. So, again, four children, and I can't count any of them, okay? So, it's, but it's important for our families here to know that if they have college students that are away, that they get counted, if they live in dorms, they get counted in the dorm. If they live in private housing, these young people must be responsible for counting themselves, okay? One of the good news that, one of the good things we found out about college students is Westchester and New York State as a whole actually benefits from the population of college students that come in. International students come in more to New York than our students that actually go out to school and other places. So, we actually benefit from a school population, as opposed to thinking that we are losing one, all right? The census itself, people will have until July 31st to be able to respond. July 31st, they actually closed down the electronic system, because by the Constitution, the Census Bureau must deliver to the President of the United States on December 31st, the official count of the country. So, 95% of the households in this country will get a letter delivered to them with a 12-digit code, it's an invitation to respond to the census. And you're going to take that 12-digit code, because it is unique to your housing unit, you will take that code and fill it in on one of the first screens when you go online. Or if you're calling the Census Bureau, you can put, give them that number, and that will tell them which housing unit you are living in. If you get an email, if you get a telephone call, if you get a letter addressed to other than resident or household, it is not a real census letter. The Census Bureau doesn't know who you are, they don't know who lives at what housing unit right now. They don't have your email address, because they don't have your name, so that, so if anybody gets any material other than a letter from Jeffersonville, Indiana, that says, addressed to resident or household, it is likely not the real census, okay? That's one of the important things for people to know. 5% of the population are going to get what they call stop and drop, and there are some here, actually here in Westchester County. If people do not have a mailbox in the front of their home, okay, or in their building, if it's an apartment building, and it happens in northern Westchester, okay? If they don't have a mailbox in the front of their home, they rely on, they go to the post office to get their mail, a Census Bureau worker will actually come and visit their home and either collect their census information right then and there, or they will actually drop the paper survey off with them to respond. And then, 1% are those people who live in the most remote areas of the country, where there's no internet service, where there is likely no reliable post office service, and that's where the census employees will actually have to go and find them in the woods. So, on or about March 12th, the first mailing with your census invitation will be sent out, which means on or about March 15th, March 16th, people will start to get these letters. In fact, by April 1st, some people will have gotten three letters from the Census Bureau, okay? Then, that's why it's important that we're out now, letting people know, to expect this. One of the things you'll see a little bit later is I have the hard-to-count areas from our 2010 census, and most of the hard-to-count areas are in fact areas that had multifamily buildings. So, one of the things we're trying to do is get to these multifamily building owners and make sure they post some kind of flyer up at the mailboxes to let people to know to watch for this mail, all right? City of Mount Vernon had one of the worst response rates in this, in this county. So, we need to be sure that all of their multifamily buildings, that they have some kind of notice up to let them know that it's coming. So, you'll get a letter on or about, like we said, March 15th. On March 20, March 16th, the second letter will go out, if you haven't responded right away. On March 23rd, March 26th, sorry, a postcard will go out. Again, it's not going to have your code on it, because it's not going to be in a sealed envelope. So, for people, they really have to watch for that first letter that will have that code. If you do not get a letter, if you do not get a code, you can still go online and complete the census, you're just going to actually give the cross streets of where your housing unit is, as well as your address. So, you'll just have to answer an extra question or two to be able to help the Census Bureau identify exactly where your housing unit is. In fact, what we're telling people, if they live with unrelated people, they may want to go online and do their own census if they're not sure if somebody else did it, like my daughter in Boston. If one, one of the other girls gets the mail and did it just for herself and didn't report on the other two, they can still go online and report for them, all right? And then, April 8th, there will be the fourth mailing, and that's the first time. If you have not responded by then, that's when the Census Bureau will actually send you the paper form. But again, they're hoping not too many people will take, will wait for the census. We do expect a number of senior citizens will wait for a paper form, because they're just, may not necessarily know what to do before that. Pretty much, if you have not responded by April 20th or so, then very likely, somebody from the Census Bureau will be knocking on your door and coming to try to take your census verbally. So, the one thing to tell people, if they don't want somebody knocking on their door, and senior citizens have been told, don't answer your door if somebody comes knocking. So, if they come knocking, if you don't want them knocking on your door, the best thing honestly to do is to respond to the census, okay? Now, I told you, number-one reason was the LUCA, the addresses. This is number-two reason why I'm really concerned about a census response. So, in 2018, the Census Bureau did the CBAM survey. This is the Census Barriers Attitudes and Motivators Survey. They sent out 50,000 invitations to again respond about the census, and just people's attitudes about the census. 17,500 people across the country took the time to respond. They did the same survey in 2008. In 2008, of the people who took the time to respond, 14% of the people who responded said, they're not going to respond to the census. 14%. In reality, that response rate was only 76%. So, 10% more did not in fact respond to the census, okay? In 2018, they asked the same question. 33% of the people who took the time to respond to this survey said they were not going to respond to the census. If we add another 10% on to that, that means four out of every 10 people in this country, four out of every 10 people in this county will not be counted. Again, major cause for concern, okay? Because these are people who took the time to respond to the survey. One of the questions they were asked was, how familiar are you with the census? Only 79% of the people who responded said that they were at all familiar with the census. Some of them are like my 26-year-old, what's a census, okay? Others, I'm sure, are people who've moved to this country or are visiting this country. And so, there are people who are living here who must respond to the census, who are not familiar with it. They were asked, why will you not respond to the census? They don't care, concerns about data confidentiality and privacy, fear of repercussion, they don't trust the government, and frankly, what's in it for me? But they were also asked, what would motivate you to respond to the census? And this is quite interesting, 94% said if it meant more money for their fire departments and for hospitals and healthcare, that would motivate them to respond. 85% said if it meant more money for schools, that would motivate them to respond. And 92% said if it meant fixing the potholes outside, we're going to get fixed, that would encourage them to respond. So, again, this helps us to make sure people know that census does in fact tie to money that comes to the local municipalities and to the county that helps us fix our roads and provide healthcare services. So, I said earlier that the national response rate was 76%. In Westchester, it was worse. Westchester's response rate was actually only 73%. The other 26%, 27% actually were people where they only responded when the census workers came knocking on their doors, okay? And so, we have hard-to-count areas all over this county. Anywhere on that map that has color on it is an area from the 2010 census that was identified as a hard-to-count area. The darker the color, the lower the response rate. In fact, the bright red areas are areas that had less than a 50% response rate. So, the city of Mount Vernon, the village of Elmsford, the village of Portchester, all, more than 50% of those communities are colored in, are colored. So, again, those are areas we are extremely concerned about, their ability to be counted. Southern Westchester as a whole, though, did not do great. In fact, in May, April, May of last year, the Rockefeller Institute, a policy came out with their 500 census tracts across New York State. Remember, I told you, we have 200 census tracts just in Westchester. So, including New York City, the 500 most difficult census tracts in the entire state to count, and Westchester County had their number-one on the list, it's in the city of Yonkers. So, again, even for, based on an algorithm for this census, the Rockefeller Institute is already saying Westchester County is going to have a problem getting our count out, particularly in the city of Mount Vernon, again, as well. So, on April 1st of last year, the county executive did establish a complete count committee. It has been actively meeting every single month since then, we're working, we did reconnaissance on all those hard-to-count areas, we've been working on a whole bunch, whole host of promotional materials and advertising, we've now got billboards up, we've now got bus ads running on the bus lines, we've got bus ads on the shelters, and we've, we're doing a whole bunch of other things. We did a kickoff at Pace University two weeks ago, and so, you know, we're actually getting a bunch of, we printed bookmarks, because again, children under five, we're going to deliver them to the children's rooms at the libraries and to the schools, we're going to have reusable shopping bags that we can give out at the farmers markets, that we're going to be able to give to all the local municipalities. So, again, the word gets out, people start to see this logo over and over and over again. So, we really need to encourage our municipalities to work with us. As we get the data in, starting on March 20th, we're going to need somebody, I'm presuming it's going to be David, but we're going to need somebody we can call, who can help us when we say, tell us something about what's in this area, because we want to tell the Census Bureau, who are the most culturally, you know, culturally, or language, whatever the issues are, who would be the most sensitive people to be able to go into those communities and help us get the best count that we possibly can, all right? So, it's going to be a challenge to make sure we get an accurate count, but again, the more awareness we raise ahead of time, frankly, it's to the good of all of us. And, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just wondered, how do you verify the accuracy of the data for the census?
You mean Census Bureau?
Mm-hmm. How do they do that?
If there are questions, they actually will collect on the census.
Your mic is off.
Yeah, I know, it's like, went off. I thought I turned it off, didn't I?
It's not green. There it goes, okay. Sorry. When I put it back in, I must have turned it off. Okay, so, if there's a question, like if multiple people respond at the same address, and they don't know what, whether there's, it's true or not, because remember, in certain circumstances, we have people that are subletting in an apartment, and or if the, where my daughter lives in Utah, if her landlord doesn't report for her, and she does it herself, and they don't know that there are two housing units. So, they do have the ability to go back, and they will collect phone numbers in that case and call them. But the, ahead of time, after we did the addresses, the Census Bureau employees were actually wandering around in the municipalities, verifying addresses ahead of time. So, they were in fact doing some searches, in fact, some of the local police departments got phone calls, are they really census people that are out there, that sort of thing. So, yeah, they have done a lot of pre-work to make sure that this goes as smoothly as possible. As I like to say, some of the work that we've done isn't going to help with this census, but it will actually help with the next census.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No? Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Drummond, you do the same, thanks.
All right, thanks.
And our next presentation is from the Senior Citizen Council, and Lyndon Agel will be doing the presentation. Sheila, you also coming up as well?
Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name, as you said, is Lyndon Agel, and this is Sheila Landsberg, and we are co-chairs of the Senior Citizen Council. The Senior Citizen Council is a volunteer organization that oversees two senior centers, the one in Tuckahoe at Father Fato Hall, and the one in Bronsville at the Reform Council. the one in Tuckahoe at Father Fado Hall and the one in Bronxville at the Reform Church. At the current time, I would really like to take the opportunity on behalf of the Senior Citizen Council and also the Tuckahoe seniors to thank you, Mayor Louisi, the Village of Tuckahoe, the trustees, thank you so much for your support and your friendship to the seniors of our community.
Thank you. Most welcome.
This year, the Senior Citizens Council and Tuckahoe Senior Center are celebrating our 50th anniversary.
Wow.
So we, the Senior Citizen Council, we are planning a 50th cheers to 50 years benefit at the Bronxville Field Club, and we will be honoring ex-mayor of Tuckahoe, Steve Eklund, Fay Blasi, who is turning 100 herself this year, who's a member, a longstanding member of the Tuckahoe Senior Council, Senior Center. We are also honoring Chief Satrial of Bronxville, Chief Police Satrial, and Gail McCarthy, who's president of the Bronxville Senior Citizens Board. So we hope you all will join us in celebrating, I'm sorry, April 23rd, 2020, at the Bronxville Field Club.
Actually, it was, was it last week, I think I was there, Angela Mondello turned 100, and I think there's one other senior that's Irene, I call her Fanucci, but she went back, she's down in Florida right now, and she'll be back up for the May, but she's also turning 100 this year.
Yeah, it's amazing.
It is. It really is. And Grace Martin, we just celebrated her birthday in January. So we had four residents.
I mean Fanucci.
Yeah, something along those lines.
So we actually have three members in Tuckahoe turning 100.
Four, four actually. Grace Martin.
Yeah, that's great. It's wonderful. There's something in the water.
There is.
Something very beneficial.
There is. And I just have to congratulate the council on what you do, how you organize the programs, the support that you show for the seniors is really remarkable, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're most welcome. And with that, we will move on to our public hearings, which we do have. The public hearing is still open on the proposed local law, which is prohibiting the sale of electronic nicotine delivery products in the Village of Tuckahoe. We've had this public hearing open for quite some time now, simply because the vaping industry has litigated the prohibition of sales in neighboring municipalities. So again, under the advice of council, we just want to wait to see what the results of those, what the results of the litigation will be. But with that being said, if anyone here in the audience would like to comment on the proposed prohibition of the sale, now is the time. Otherwise, we will keep this public hearing open. Do I have a motion to keep this hearing open?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Mayor Louisi.
In favor. Next, it'll bring us to the approval of the minutes of the January 13, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
In favor. At this time, it is the first opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any agenda items.
Hello, Thomas Logan at 31 Millen Place, the village of Tuckahoe, apartment 3D, and I had discussed prior with this administration about the election thing, and have done some further.
Can I just stop you for a minute, Tom? This is simply agenda items right now.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
You're free to speak, though, Tom, as soon as these, at the end, you understand, right? Yep.
Okay, that'll bring us to, again, I'll ask anyone in the audience, any agenda items. Okay. Move on to resolutions. Number one is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Suez Water Westchester Incorporated for water usage, data sharing, and security. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Mayor Louisi.
In favor. And resolution number two is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Brown and Wine Rob, PL LLC, for legal services in connection with the creation of a village sewer fund. Before I make a motion, Mr. Burke, would you like to expound on this, please?
So I can give a little background about the prior resolution just passed in regards to the Suez data and then this resolution for legal services. This is a process that started a couple of years ago in regards to looking at the potential to enact a sewer rent fee. Why we're starting to look at this is because the certain state agencies are coming down on local municipalities if they haven't been upgrading their sewer system. So if you think about the Village of Tuckahoe, we have nearly 13 miles of sewer pipe in various sizes, some clay pipes. You know, we have infrastructure underneath us that we haven't done anything with, some we've relined, so we're in various degrees of that, but it's, you know, we have 13 miles of pipe underneath us, and that's an expensive endeavor to try to keep that, you know, keep that up. So a few years ago, the Suez municipalities, that's all the private water throughout Westchester, kind of got together, and in order to look at a sewer rent fee and try to enact something like this, or the potential to enact something like this, we needed the data from Suez Water to be able to look at how much water consumption someone uses to be able to enact a fee based on water consumption. That was a couple of years ago. We actually had to have state legislation passed to be able to get that data. We're actually at that point where that was passed. Agreements were drawn up between Suez and each individual municipality, and that's what this, that's what the first resolution does. It allows the Village of Tuckahoe to receive the data in order to explore doing this. The second agreement is an agreement with an attorney that's been assisting several of the municipalities that have Suez water, to be able to, again, get the legislation passed, to get the agreements passed with Suez, and to eventually look at local laws setting up the sewer fund. And another component of that is if the sewer fund does go through, one of the first things that we need, have to do is get a comprehensive kind of reconnaissance plan. We'd have to look at our infrastructure holistically and figure out a plan, how do we move going forward? And that's what this attorney does. This agreement is for a flat $2,000 fee. Now, when you think about attorney's fees and everything else, that's actually a...
Dirt cheap.
It's dirt cheap. The reason for, this is one of the reasons why we're doing this together with a bunch of other municipalities. As of right now, Argyle Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, and Tuckahoe are kind of taking the lead because we're all at a little bit different points, but we're all taking the lead to try to figure out how we kind of work together to be able to have some sort of shared services. So we've actually interviewed some, three different engineering firms to see if there's some sort of cost savings that we can kind of come together. If the village does want to go down this route at a different point, we would put a local law in front of the board to discuss, to look at. But even if we don't, as of this point, I think it's, you know, it's a good activity to go through because, again, we're all sharing services and we're getting up to a certain point, and then if the village decides to or not to, we're all ready to go at another point. So that's where we are on this. I'm going to continue, we'll get the data, we'll look at it, we'll have further discussion in the future in regards to local laws and if we want to move forward in some of this.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the support of amendments to the New York State Criminal Justice Reforms as outlined by the New York Conference of Mayors. Before I ask for a motion, I just want to just briefly explain to our residents what this is about. As many of you may or may not know, January 1, there was a criminal justice reform that was passed here in the state of New York. And what we have done over the last month in collaboration with the chief here, we've met with Senator Shelley Mayers and Assemblywoman Amy Pauling regarding the criminal justice reform. So the highlights of this resolution, as I'm just going to read them to you now, is to ensure that cities and villages are provided with additional financial and operational support to offset the cost of these mandated measures. Allow 60 days for prosecutors to disclose evidence to the defense for criminal charges. Exclude from the accelerated discovery requirements any charge not involving a misdemeanor or felony. Adjust the 20-day arraignment requirement to accommodate local courts that meet on a monthly basis. And lastly, allow prosecutors to withhold sensitive information such as victim contact information without having to obtain a court order. Pretty much everyone is an agreement that we needed, or there needed to be reformed to the criminal justice system. However, it seems that this legislation that was passed January 1 may have gone too far to the other side. So, and as I said, in cooperation with our local police chief and other municipalities and judicial members, domestic violence advocates, and so on and so forth, this is sort of, can we get this done? So that's all we're trying to do, is we're going to send this up to Albany to let Albany know that, at the very least, if you can try to make some of these changes, it would be most helpful and beneficial to any victims of any crime. So do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Mayor Louisi.
In favor. And that will bring us to resolution number five, which is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $460,893.79. Do I have a motion?
Skip number four.
Skip number five.
Wow. Okay, well, let's do five, as long as I got. You want me to do four? All right, even though I just did five. Okay. Authorizing resolution number four is authorizing the mayor to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the County of Westchester for Positive Youth Development Program Grant Administration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
In favor. And that'll bring me to resolution number five, which is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $460,893.79. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
In favor. And this will bring us to a discussion item, which is concerning the Community Choice Aggregation Program. In January, this group held a community meeting, if you will, at the community center, which was also recorded. We don't know if it's been out there on cable, but anyway, what this is about is about the, basically, the village board would sign on to this program and enlist all the residents of the village in this program to enact cost savings of electric power. The residents will have the opportunity to opt out of that program if they so desire, but before we even get to that point, the program will begin an outreach program here in the community to garner interest from the residents to see if, in fact, we are going to move forward with this. So I will ask anyone on the board if they would like to comment on this.
Just to say that one of the big points of this Choice Aggregation Program is also to use greener energy sources.
So what they're trying to do, what the program will do is, they're hoping that Yonkers will sign on to this program, so hopefully, we will be able to partner with them if, in fact, we do sign on to this program, to sort of keep the cost of electricity down. And this will be a program that will be, you can re-up every year, you could also opt out at any point in time. So it's just something that we would do as a board to sort of try to get the best electric rates for the residents here in the village, and that's what this program's about. And if you do get the opportunity when it is on our local cable, please take the opportunity to watch the program. The first 15, 20 minutes is really the heart and soul of what this program is all about. So we will, again, if you have any questions about this, please contact the village clerk's office or one of the trustees or myself. Yes, Mr. Burke?
Just to make things clear is that if the board does want to express interest in the program, this kicks off the community outreach, so we'll make sure that the website has some information about it, but this is going to kick off. So they're going to do more programs, probably at the community center, village hall, and some of the senior centers. So again, it'll be kind of two months of outreach, and then the board will have a decision if they want to join the program at that point. So even if they don't, you know, watch the cable or, you know, the scroll, we'll have more meetings in the future.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Great.
So that will bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and we'll begin with our chief of police, John Costanzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of announcements. The first one is the old good news, bad news. Happy to say that they're finally resuming construction on the southwest corner of Yonkers Avenue at Scarsdale Road. It was a very small parcel of land there that they started some foundation work probably a year and a half, two years ago, and stopped. They are going to start up next week with some steel work, so that's the good news. The bad news is, is in order for them to erect and use cranes to put the steel in place, they have to close Yonkers Avenue for two to three days completely.
For 24 hours?
We can live, we can live with two to three days.
Probably about a 10-hour workday.
Oh, okay.
But for the, during the day, early morning into early evening, they will be closing Yonkers Avenue. We will have a police officer posted there to assist people. We have requested that they post detour routes in advance. We will be, the police department will be putting the road closure on social media, on Swift Reach, or 911, and also hand-delivering notices to the businesses of Yonkers Avenue on the dates that they'll be affected. So it'll be during President's Week, not on President's Day, the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday following President's Day. We're hoping there's a little lighter traffic that week, so, and it is possible that with a 10-hour workday, they could get it done in two days. So that's what we're shooting for and really getting rid of that eyesore down there and having a structure firm, I think is a big plus to the village.
Thank you.
With talking about Swift, Swift 911, we are really, we started a program really trying to enlist residents and businesses to sign up so that we can make email notifications much easier. We gained a lot of support and added several hundred people to our list, but there's still several businesses that don't participate. So when we had some recent road closings and even movie shoots, it was very difficult reaching out to the business owners. We have, so two things, we are again pushing the social media and Swift 911 for us to get those messages out, but we also, every year, do an update to the business file in the police department. We are going to now include emails for all the contacts. You know, in the past, we generally just used, you know, telephone numbers to reach business owners in an emergency. We ask them now to provide email addresses so that we could create a database that we would be able to, you know, get the notices out to specific areas of the village. So we started that process about two weeks ago. It's in motion, and it'll enable us to get the word out to people, because we've had complaints in the past when, you know, it was difficult for... complaints in the past when, you know, it was difficult for people to find parking, et cetera, and we had some traffic disruptions.
Chief, just a question. You said we only had a couple hundred people?
We've added several hundred.
Oh, okay. That's all we have?
Several thousand now in the database. We were very low, probably about a year ago. Really did a hard push getting messages out to the residents, and we've had a good response. But the lack, or what we're lacking, is the business end for the contacts. And then finally, just a bit of, you know, good news. We had a very serious hit-and-run accident a few weeks back on Columbus Avenue at Parkview. A young man was very seriously injured, and the person who struck him left the scene. I'm happy to say that we made an arrest this week in that case. Great work by the police officers and the detectives, following up, canvassing the whole general area, finding video, and very cooperative effort by our business owners in sharing some very critical video that helped solve the case. So the good news is that, two things. One, that the young man is recovering and doing better, much better than he was. And two, that the person responsible for hitting him is now under arrest.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our superintendent of public works, Mr. Frank DiMarco.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the board. Now that we're hot on the topic of construction work and infrastructure work and traffic control detoring cars throughout the village, I just want to bring up the topic of Winter Hill Road. Winter Hill Road, people are asking me what is going on with all this construction that's going on at Winter Hill Road. But just a quick summary, Coniston came in originally, replaced all their gas mains. In doing so, they damaged a lot of our sewer infrastructure. So we had them replace a lot of it. We also relined most of the road. So we had their contractor do all this remediation. There were five decorative lampposts that run up and down on the ICS side of Winter Hill Road. What we found is that we were trying to repair the light fixtures that were there, and a lot of the electrical wiring and the fixtures themselves are very dangerous and antiquated. So we figured it's a perfect opportunity, before we pave Winter Hill Road in early spring, to excavate the road near the curb, run all-new electrical conduit and all-new electrical wiring, and supply all-new fixtures on Winter Hill. So if people are asking, why is the, why are the fixtures not working? We decided to shut all them down because they were antiquated and dangerous, and we really didn't want anybody getting hurt. So I sent flyers out to those that live in the area, but those that pass by the area still wondering what's going on. But we will be finished within a couple of days and hope that we could just repave the road and get it all over with.
Right.
Okay? Just want to, I'm going to touch a little bit on food scrap recycling. It's been a tremendous turnout. We had so many people, and the mayor, getting involved in this. And surprisingly, we even have people from local municipalities that are trying to come on board too. But we need to limit what we're collecting, because we're only a small DPW yard. But most importantly, I want to touch that because of our efforts, the smaller communities, the several communities in Westchester County that came aboard and formed our own consortium, we kind of helped Westchester County come aboard with us. So as of September 1st, Westchester County is going to be picking up our food scraps, managing them along the way, and make sure they properly go to their locations, which is the food scrap composting locations. So with that said, you know, thank you to Westchester County, and that's a cost savings to the village, because they now won't have to pay for a licensed carter to take it to a compost facility. And as of September 1st, all municipalities in Westchester County are welcome to come aboard. And that's all I really have.
I just want to compliment your department on finding that water leak on Winter Hill as well.
I skate away from that.
I'm keeping my fingers crossed, but now at least it's not there. We don't, you know, wherever that water, nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
And the food scrap, you know, I'll go to be talking about this. You keep bringing it up, I'll keep talking about it. I mean, I didn't put any garbage out today on Monday, so I've been a big advocate for this thing. It's amazing what it's, I mean, outside from the environmental issue, what you're going to be putting out on Monday and Friday is going to be nothing. There won't be, I'm down to one pickup a week now on my kitchen refuse right now, so.
Thank you.
It's a great program.
It is.
I wholly, I will highly encourage everyone to participate in it. Camille?
No report.
No, no report. Mr. Gerst? And that'll bring us to miscellaneous business. Our next village board meeting will be on March 9th, 2020, right here at 7:00 PM. And with that, that'll bring us to our board of trustee members' reports, and we'll begin with trustee Omira Andino.
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to keep it short. I'd like to reiterate that the senior citizens council really is doing some great work. I attended the 100th birthday for longtime resident Angela Mandello, and I just really was struck by how great these 100-year-old ladies and men are. And so obviously, they're doing some good things there to keep our seniors looking great and feeling good. I also got a chance to attend a Stronger Together Coalition meeting with the mayor and the chief and the attorney, Gary, on January 28th. For those of you who might remember, Angela Semenara and Molly Hendrick, they came and spoke to us about the Stronger Together Coalition, which includes Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe. And they do a lot of good work to foster healthy behaviors and help reduce substance abuse in our community for the youth specifically. So they're going to be applying for a Drug-Free Communities DFC grant, and they're looking for members in the community to partner with them. So I really want to encourage members of this community. They're looking for people in the faith community to join them. And so I really would like for us to just push, push for us to partner with them. They will be having a town hall meeting on March 3rd at Concordia College at 7:00 PM. So if we can get out and get more information, that would be good. Also, just a reminder that voting day is on Wednesday, March 18th this month. It's the day after St. Patrick's Day, so a few people have asked me, so I wanted to make sure that everybody remembers. It's not on Tuesday. If you show up, you won't find anybody there. All right, so that's voting. Okay, let's see, just trying to avoid paper and keep my notes in my phone. So the library has begun a five-year strategic planning process, which I participated in last week, and it was really great. They started a SWOT analysis, going over what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are to the library. We had participation from young people. One young lady that came from the Scouts, no longer Girl Scouts, the Scouts in Tuckahoe. And we're just really looking at the ways that we could offer things that the community is looking for. Maybe the community has changed a bit, and there are some gaps. So we're looking at how we can complete this strategic plan, which is now five years old, they're looking for a new one, by September. So that's really exciting for the library. One of the things that we're talking about doing is using social media a little more, maybe having a Facebook Live bedtime story with Miss Elaine, which I think that will be fun. A few other things that are going on at the library this month, they have pre-K yoga for ages two and a half to five years old. I could barely do yoga now at 50, but it's great for the toddlers. The teens are continuing with the chess club for grades K through 12. And for the adults, they do have the AARP Tax Help Fridays from noon to 3:00, which I think I might be participating in. I just got my AARP enrollment form. So I'm joining that club, Mayor. Joining the club.
Great benefits, I tell you.
So I'm hearing they're great benefits, so. And also, just so you all know, for Black History Month, we will have a soul food cooking presentation on Wednesday, February 19th, from 6:30 to about 8:00, with residents Marilyn Graham and Stephanie Palmer joining with me to cook some good soul food. So come out, fried chicken, mac and cheese, candied yams, and string beans. Nobody said this was healthy soul food, just soul food, so come out and eat. And we also have CPR training on Saturday, February 29th, at 10:00 AM for ages 14 to adult. That's a great training to attend if you're interested. As I say every month, we have a robust program at the library. You can go on to tuckahoe.com backslash library for more information. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Deputy Mayling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so first, we have our history committee. The committee conducted a mini marble tour to several village residents, and it was very successful. A call was received from Canada requesting pictures from our archives. February, again, is Black History Month. The display will be available in the lobby at Village Hall. They encourage residents to visit on Wednesdays from 9:00 to noon. And also, under recommendation of our village historian, Richard Foliano, every time I see that, I think of Tom Foliano. Him and I went to high school, this is his dad. Richard Foliano, who is, we are currently discussing what it is we need to do to form our own landmark preservation committee. Rich stressed that we need to move rather quickly on this, so we'll keep you posted. That's it for history. So in the absence of Gina, I will mention a couple of events that the Tuckahoe seniors have going on. On the 13th of February at 12:00 noon, they're having a Valentine's Day pasta lunch. On Tuesday, the 18th, at 1:00 PM, heroism of the World War II Tuskegee Airmen with Dr. Chris Pers. That's pretty much it for seniors. I hope she don't get mad at me with that. Let's see. Okay, yes, the board would like to congratulate Tuckahoe's newest Eagle Scout, Seenin Cummins. Congratulations to you and your family. That's quite an accomplishment. Good for you, sir. We would also like to congratulate Ralph Stup on his retirement and thank him for his 30-plus years he served our community. We thank you and your family, Ralph. Thank you very much. Also, we'd like to make mention the Shiloh Brotherhood Community Breakfast will be on February 15th at 8:30 to 11:00 AM. And all that wonderful food that Omira was just mentioning, you'll be able to taste there as well. Okay, and lastly, I just wanted to remind everyone of the 16th Annual St. Patty's Day Parade on Sunday, March 15th, 3:00 PM, Route 22. This year's grand marshal is Tim McGrath. Those of you who know Tim, know he'll just do, he'll do just about anything for you, and I mean anything. So congratulations to him and his family, and we'll see you on St. Patty's Day, Tim. Congratulations. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Howell?
Thank you, Mayor. So for this month, the zoning board meeting will be held February 12th on Wednesday. The working meeting will be 30 minutes prior to that. And planning board meeting will be on February 17th. On the agenda for both, our returns for the daycare on Columbus and on 145 Main Street, the dog training and boarding facility. Planning board, in addition, has 125 Marble Dale Road, which is the batting cage, which is up and operational, but they have an architectural review for some things on the outside of the building. Wanted to remind everybody that on February 14th, at the Tuckahoe Community Center, there'll be a Parents Night Out from 6:30 to 9:30, so you can get your kids watched while you go out and enjoy a wonderful meal is somewhere at a restaurant in Tuckahoe. This is being led by Teresa Nicholson, who's a member of the Eastchester Town Board, and it will benefit the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. So no excuses. Everybody needs to go out to dinner. Wanted to make residents aware that for those who are, I think I spoke about this before, but I now have a date, the Eastchester School Board is putting forward for a vote on March 24th, a $19.6 million bond for safety, security, and infrastructure. So that election will be held March 24th in the Eastchester Middle School gym. They will, the school board's going to put on four information sessions. The first, Wednesday, February 26th, at the High School Auditorium. The second, Monday, March 2nd, at the Anne Hutch School Auditorium. The third, Tuesday, March 10th, at the Greenville School All-Purpose Room. The final one, on Thursday, March 19th, at the Waverly School Cafeteria. These will all be held at 7:00 PM. So I encourage people who live in the Eastchester School District to educate themselves about that, and I'm happy to send folks information if they contact me through the village board Trustee Andino mentioned the March 3rd Town Hall for Stronger Together. And one interesting thing that's going to be presented there is they have surveyed all of the high school students about drug use in the community, from Bronxville, Tuckahoe, and Eastchester High Schools. So they're going to release the survey results from that. And again, everyone is invited to that. March is Women's History Month, and the library will be holding a program on March 11th at 7:00 PM with a panel of local women in government. So far, we have, we know that Mayor Mary Marvin from Bronxville will attend, trustee Andino and myself, and will be reflecting, among other things, on the 100th anniversary of the women's right to vote. On March 15th, the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce will be holding a Fitness and Wellness Fest. They did this a couple months ago, and it was such a success, they're bringing it back. Anybody, any business who would like to apply for a spot there can do so through the chamber. And trustee Andino mentioned that we have elections this year on March 18th, and that is in the New York law. They allow the election to be moved if it falls on St. Patrick's Day, so we don't have to think too much about why that is, but elections will be on Wednesday this year. So as a follow-up to the discussions that we've had over the last couple months on elections, a great suggestion was put forward by a resident, Virginia Marciano. She suggested that we create a one-page information about all of the elections, when they're held, where you might get some extra information, and send that out to new residents as they move into Tuckahoe, and also to post it on the website. So with that inspiration, I drew up a draft of that. Virginia has reviewed it and edited it and checked the links, and that is now before the village board. And so hopefully, we'll be getting to put that on, and I just wanted to thank Virginia for her great idea. That's it.
Thank you. I will keep my report short, and this is going to be about the Eastchester Relay for Life, which begins, began today, and will be continuing for the following month. The Eastchester Relay for Life is a fundraiser to benefit cancer research. This is the fifth year that they will be holding this event, and what the campaign involves is there will be nine different restaurants over 15 different nights in Tuckahoe that will donate 10% of their proceeds, of that night's proceeds, to the Eastchester Relay for Life. And those restaurants are Angelina's Restaurante, J.C. Fogarty's in Bronxville, The Mason Sandwich Company in Eastchester, Mickey Spillane's in Eastchester, The Quarry Restaurant here in Tuckahoe, Rio Bravo Tacos and Tequila in Tuckahoe, Stevens Green, Toscano Restaurante, and Tucked Away. Now, the actual Relay for Life will be held at Lake Isle on May 16th, 2020. So for any further information, you can contact judy@cornells.com, or you can call her at And that's all I have for this evening, and it...
Excuse to beat up.
It is, it sure is. And just to be more specific, please, not each restaurant, each restaurant has that program on a different night of the week. So there will be a flyer that's going to be up on our website, and I believe the flyers are going around the village as well, so. So I know that Angelina specifically is having theirs on February 13th and March 3rd. I know that because I already made reservations for March 3rd. But anyway, as you've heard me say, there's other restaurants, so please take advantage of not only getting to eat out at some really good restaurants, but you'll also be supporting the Relay for Life for such a worthy, worthy cause. And with that, this is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board on any item. Mr. Logan?
Two things. The first one, I noticed down Marble Dale Road that there's no sign for the quarry. And I know that has been historically a significant part of this village. Other landmarks are around the village, but there's none down there. And I don't see why there shouldn't be one down there, since the quarry has been all over the world, especially in Washington, D.C. So I, you know, I would like to see a sign posted down there. The other thing is that I had did some extensive research for the things that's been discussed here in the village over the past three months and what have you. Come to find out that the idea of having everything being held on one election date for the city is fantastic. They've got 20 million people there, and I can understand the reasoning for having that one day for everything on that thing. We're a village of 6,000 people, you understand? And the differential is less than a percent of an increase, putting it on one day and what have you. And I also, the third part of that, is that seven other municipalities in Westchester have, did exactly what we're talking about. And it turns out that it's either all Democratic or all Republicans running the village. Here at the Village of Tuckahoe, we have diversity. We have Democrats and Republicans, which makes for a strong board in government. And that's what I would prefer seeing in there. I would hate to see one party dominate a village and things and what have you, because, you know, you're either a strong Republican or a strong Democrat and what have you. So for the sake of, you know, because we are so small, having it on the March, well, this year, 18th, it's a good time and what have you. I mean, the idea's a good idea. If we were 20,000 or 30,000 people, I can understand that and what have you. We're not that large of a community for us to have that. And you've got to take into consideration the seniors that are coming down and are going to be voting on that thing, and they're not going to be going, they're having problems with the way things are right now. You understand what I'm saying? Dunglo checking people from, either two Democrats or two Republicans on different party lines, same names on different party lines, they're having problems understanding you can only choose one. So, you know, there is, you know, you've got to look at a few other things and what have you. So, you know, that's my thoughts. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Reverend Dr. Michael Gerald, pastor of Shiloh Baptist Church. I live at 15 Wallace Street here in Tuckahoe. On February 29th, I, along with several residents of the village, will be sponsoring a community forum. We would like to make sure that each trustee is invited to come and to take part in this forum. We'll be discussing issues that are relevant. Some, Tommy Logan has just mentioned, one of the issues that we like to talk about, get your thoughts on, and let you know how we, as residents, feel about the issue of moving the election or keeping the election in March. This is one of the issues that we're targeting, looking at housing, looking at affordable housing, and other issues that are pertinent to what's going on in our community. I am also interested in having Chief Costanza there. He's already informed me that he has a conflict. I'm hoping that we might be able to work that out. But I would love to see each of you there on February 29th, between 2:00 and 4:00, at the Tuckahoe Community Center. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lovey Phillips, South High Street. Good to see you, all of you.
Same here.
Want to start with very good news. I'm so appreciative of the Tuckahoe Police Department and the way they are supporting what is arduous confusion in trying to drive through Main Street with the construction. But they really have been very helpful in easing something that's really a pain in the neck. But we realize we don't own Main Street, but thank you. And I also want to give kudos to the sanitation department, which every time, others come from other places and they congratulate Tuckahoe from snow removal, which, thank God, we haven't had to deal with right now, but from the way we keep it. So I'm starting with the good news. The other thing is, I'm that bellwether that's going to keep saying, my eye is on those five trees in Depot Square for Christmas. I'm not, I'm going to be on it. I want that to look like something that represents the village of Tuckahoe, following those beautiful candy cane lights that come down to there. I'm going to say it every time, so get it in your heads. And if I don't see it next year, I'm going to be carrying on something awful. I also have a little concern, and still a question. I was with one of the trustees this week, and I'm not sure that any of us understand what it is you voted for last time in reference to when we hold elections here. I thought that you voted against the fact that we should hold a referendum to see what to deliberate the idea of that, and that you put that down. I understood from, and I will not name the trustee, and they can do it themselves if they want to, who said, no, you voted that we should have elections in March and November. So I would appreciate clarification from this board tonight in plain English. What is it that you voted for so that we know? I am personally upset with the idea that you voted, I think, against the fact that we should even consider it.
No.
So, and if I'm wrong, I don't like being wrong, but if I'm wrong, tell me. But if you're wrong, I'm going to tell you. So that's it. And congratulations to all of you and the job you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I believe I have an education base, and I think people ought to understand what it, where they stand, where you stand, and so that we can decide what's best for our beloved Tuckahoe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Mayor, are you going to address that?
Sure. The vote that we took last month was to move the village election to, from March to November. The board voted against that move, and all that means is that the board feels that the village election should remain in the month of March. If the village board had voted to move the elections to November, then it would have been a referendum on the November ballot, I believe, or with, we don't know for sure, but it would have been a referendum on the ballot if we had voted to change the elections to November.
Well, how did we get so confused that I didn't think that was the issue?
I made it, I explained this, I explained this at the resolution when we had that meeting last month.
Well, I think, I'd like to hear from you.
So, Mayor, if I may?
Sure, absolutely.
So the vote, as recorded in the minutes, which we just approved, was in fact for, to put forward a referendum to vote on whether to change the elections. We did not vote on actually changing the elections.
That's what I'm concerned about. That's what I thought. And I've been reading a whole lot of years, this gray hair will tell you, something's wrong with this. You need to make this clear tonight, clear to the people, because we're all over the place with this. And to me, it's two very separate issues, not whether or not we're going to have it March and November, but whether or not we will have a referendum to decide whether we want to do that. Am I wrong?
No. So Ms. Phillips, you're right. There are two issues. There's one issue of whether or not we move the elections. This board does not vote on whether or not we move the elections. This board votes on whether or not we put it on the ballot. So when we're talking about a referendum, that's the resolution that trustee Howell read at the last meeting. It's whether or not we allow the residents to vote on whether or not we move the elections. So we did not vote on whether or not we move the elections, rather, do we allow the residents to vote on it? So that's a clarification, and Gary, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, so would someone tell me who's right here? What did we vote for? I'm not sure.
So we voted...
The mayor's saying one thing.
Gary, would you?
Someone clarified this. This is very important. I taught civics. Somebody needs to tell me something here.
So there was a motion before the board by trustee Howell to put forth a referendum to vote on moving the elections. That motion was not passed.
That's what I thought. You voted for that motion. You voted against the motion to...
To move the election to November.
Wait, you know what? Is it okay if each of you tells me what you think you voted for? Because I really need to know this. This is really getting on my nerves right here, right now.
Gary, could you just explain this one more time?
You're all over the place.
So trustee Howell made a motion to have a referendum, to have the public vote, to see if they're going to move the election to November.
Right.
That motion did not pass.
And that's the motion?
Therefore, there will be no referendum sent by this board to have the public vote on that.
And that's the only motion that was put out there that did not pass, right? So Mayor, you're going to have to tell me now, what do you think you passed?
That the elections will remain in March.
But that was not the motion.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, tell me.
The consequences are the same. So it's, I think you're getting, the process is not going forward. So basically, right now, the elections are staying in March.
Yes.
Based on the actions of this board. So they are saying the same thing, a little differently.
Right.
The result's the same.
The result's the same, but the means is very different.
Right.
Well, I'm a teacher. I'm into semantics, and I suggest that in the future, you ought to do a better job of semantically explaining what's going on, because to me, this is very confusing. I believe in democracy. I believe the majority rules, but I think that what people think they're voting for... I remember someone getting up at the last meeting, I saw it on TV, asking for clarity. And she presented what I thought you were voting on, which was not, now I'm so confused, which was whether or not we would have a referendum for people to decide whether they wanted to debate, whether they wanted to decide about when to vote.
That's what this board voted down.
I don't know if this can be repaired. I hope it's never repeated.
I'd just like to bring to your attention, since I talked with my pastor, he said that there will be a van available for seniors to be picked up and taken down to the polls for election at Fort Union Place and what have you. So they're will try to set up some type of schedule for, you know, for, to be posted so the driver will know.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. So I just wanted to touch a couple of things for the chamber.
Besides the, the health thing, which is cool, but the mayor and the chief were at our meeting last month, as well as O'Meara, and it was very helpful. So I want to thank you both for coming. I think what we'd like to do, we had a breakfast meeting today for the first time, so we're going to be switching from breakfast, we're going to do breakfast, and we're going to do evenings, and we're going to extend invitations to all the trustees always, so hopefully you'll be able to go. Because I think communication with the business community is critical. Second thing is, is that I am working on that list. The problem is, I can't get the thing, I don't have the code. So I've been playing, I've got to get this code to get the list. I haven't been able to get MailChimp to give me the list for the businesses, so we can do what we talked about. So that should happen, hopefully, this week. I'm working on it. I promise.
And so you'll give that to the chief, Mike?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the thing. I'm trying to get it, and when you, it's a technical thing. It's not that technical, but it's an issue, but it'll be resolved. And thirdly, I did ask the mayor at the meeting for the, at the chamber last week, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, regarding having the building department be more engaging and forthcoming with residents and with businesses, and the mayor liked and agreed with that happening. So after the election is over, I think it makes sense to sort of maybe look at, maybe a couple times a year where the building department would address residents, not to tell us what's up with different issues, and I'm sure laws and codes change constantly, and also for businesses, so that we can get them up and running quicker. Everybody gets revenue fast, and businesses have more chance of success. So we're going to be addressing that, but we'll wait till after the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Well, with that being said, no further business, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a good night.